Good evening and welcome to the September 3, 2020 Holliston School Committee meeting. It is 7:05. I'm calling this meeting to order pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16, 2020. A Holliston School Committee will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the HCAT webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I said all participants remotely attending, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, I will call roll call, Mrs. Listevnik.
Present.
Mr. Morton.
Present.
Ms. Koshin.
Present.
Ms. Naborsky.
Present.
Dr. Savard.
Present.
Ms. Handstead.
Present.
Mrs. Raffey. Present. At this time, I will accept a motion to participate remotely for this evening's meeting. All those in favor, Mrs...oh, sorry, I need a motion.
Move by Dawn.
Seconded by Cynthia.
Moved by Dawn, seconded by Cynthia. Roll call vote, Mrs. Listevnik.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Ms. Koshin.
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky.
Yes.
Dr. Savard.
Yes.
Ms. Handstead.
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey.
Yes.
And at this time, I will take a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of impact bargaining strategies with the Holliston Federation of Teachers for which we will return to open session.
Moved by Cynthia. Seconded by Catherine.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Catherine. Roll call vote, Mrs. Listevnik.
Yes.
Mr. Morton.
Yes.
Ms. Koshin.
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky.
Yes.
Dr. Savard.
Yes.
Ms. Handstead.
Yes.
Mrs. Raffey.
Yes.
It is 7:07. We will move into executive session and to the public, we will return an open session. I anticipate about 30 minutes.
It is 7:40, the school committee is now resuming our meeting into open session. All members are still present. Good evening, everybody. It is Thursday, September 3rd, 2020. All of the school committee members are here. Mr. Boudet, Dr. Cuska, Dr. Patello. And we also have Mr. Baker, our athletic director, and Ms. Bottomley, our high school principal. I am actually switching the agenda a little bit and having them go first so that they can sign off when they're done. So, welcome to both of you. Matt, it's great to see you. I have not seen you all summer. Nicole, nice to see you again. So, I had asked Susan if we could have an athletic update. We want to hear what's going on in terms of your planning, what you're hearing from the commissioner, and what you are doing in terms of communication with the student athletes. So, I will turn it over to you and welcome.
Sure, thank you. Nice to see everybody. Thank you for having us tonight, giving us a chance to tell you what our plan is going forward for this fall. So, I have a presentation. I'm going to share my screen. Is that good? Can everybody see that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, thank you for having me here tonight to discuss the collaborative plan the Tri-Valley League has created in an effort to get back to athletics safely. We've been working hard as a league implementing the guidelines set forth by the governor's office, the EEA, DESI, and the MIAA. The TVLEDs have gone one step further in implementing additional measures to create what we feel is the safest model for our student athletes and community. We presented our plan to the league principals who voted unanimously to adopt this model for the fall sports season. I want to acknowledge that this pandemic is constantly evolving and note that we recognize this. We'll continue to monitor the situation and adapt it to need. So, I'll go through my presentation. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end of it. I understand how unsettling the past few months have been and how anxious everybody is for information. I thank you all for being patient and positive throughout the waiting stage. And I'm happy to share our plan to return to athletics in a safe and healthy manner. After receiving final guidelines from the EEA, DESI, and our governing body for athletics, the MIAA, Holliston Public Schools and the Tri-Valley League feel that we have a solid plan in place for the fall season. Our main focus is always the health and safety of all of our student athletes. So, the MIAA made some updates to their sports seasons. Instead of the traditional three, we now have four sports seasons, and they have switched the typical start dates for those. So, for the fall season, which will be Fall Season One, the earliest practice date is September 18th, and the season ends no later than November 20th. There will not be any state tournaments per the MIAA for this season. Winter season, earliest possible, tryout date is November 30th, and the season ends no later than February 21st. No decisions have been made by the MIAA yet regarding postseason for this season. Now, this is the important one, the Fall Two or Floating Season. This is a new season. The earliest possible practice date is February 22nd, and the season ends no later than April 25th. Again, no decisions have been made by the MIAA regarding postseason tournaments for this season. And last, we have the Spring Season. The earliest possible practice date is April 26th, and the season ends no later than July 3rd. Again, no information regarding postseason tournaments at this time. So, the sports we will have this fall. In the Fall Season One, the MIAA automatically moved the high-risk sports of cheer, football, and unified basketball to the Floating Season Two due to their high-risk level. The Tri-Valley League has voted to move volleyball to the Fall Season Floating Two also due to the indoor availability of league facilities, along with safety precautions, and trying to get the first set of sports that we run outdoors. Many leagues across the state have chosen to move volleyball to the Fall Season Two. At this time, I don't think I'm aware of any that are playing in the fall. We also decided to push out the start dates for Fall One Sports Season to give all students and schools time to acclimate to their new schedules, with the exception of golf, as that deals with daylight and course availability. So, in the seasons we will be running, we will have coed golf planning to begin on September 18th for practice, matches to begin on September 25th, boys and girls cross-country, field hockey, and soccer practices to begin on September 26th, and games and meets to start on October 10th. We will continue to offer varsity and JV-level teams and freshman teams based on numbers. Middle school athletics. In regards to this, the Tri-Valley League discussed the middle school athletics, and none of the Tri-Valley League schools will be offering them during Fall One. Our middle school is actually part of a league called the Bay Valley League, which is schools from our league, the Bay State League, and the Hockamok League. A.D.s from all these schools have met and decided to forego middle school sports for their fall seasons. There is programming available with the youth sports groups in Holliston, as well as with the Parks and Rec Department. So, we encourage people to refer to those groups for potential offers. Next slide, the risk levels of all sports. As determined by the EEA, I have them all on there for the whole school sports seasons. But I'll focus on the fall, since that's our first order of business. We have the lower-risk sports, cross-country and golf, which we will be running. We have field hockey and soccer and volleyball, moderate-risk sports. We'll be running field hockey and soccer. We will not be running volleyball until Fall Two. And then we have the higher-risk sports of cheer, football, and unified basketball, which have already been moved to the Fall Two season by the MIAA. They have made no determinations yet on any winter sports, Fall Two, or Spring. So, I think they may be addressing winter sports at the end of October or the beginning of November. So, just like leading up to this season, I think the rest of these seasons are going to be a waiting game as well. So, our league tried to come up with the safest way possible while limiting interaction between all 12 schools in the league. So, we decided to divide the league into geographic pods. We were in the first pod with Ashland, Bellingham, Hockington, Medway, and Norton. And the other pod is pretty much the 109 schools in the Tri-Valley League. We designed these by mileage, to limit travel and interaction amongst our schools. It's a nice breakdown of our league, which is divided into large and small. Each pod has three large teams, three small teams. Teams will only play teams within their specific pod. We will not cross over into the other pod. All of the schools in TBL have decided we will not participate in any non-league contests or scrimmages during the Fall One season. So, for our games, meets, and matches, we've established that all games and meets will take place on Saturdays and Sundays. Golf matches will continue to be played during the week with the possibility of weekend matches. Golf courses typically are not available for high schools to use on the weekends. So, we'll continue to utilize the weekdays. The thinking in this is we're going to kind of go back to a youth sports model where kids are going to show up to the school in their uniforms, in their own, with their own water. We're not going to have access to the school building, to the locker rooms. So, by limiting having other schools come to our school on a weekday, we've just decided to pod everybody. We'll be playing the same teams on Saturday and Sunday in opposite locations for the sports that we're offering. Team rosters will be limited to 20 participants on days of the game or a meet due to the EEA guidelines. Golf rosters will remain at eight for a match. We've also established new practice limitations league-wide for the fall season. Preseason practice sessions can take place every day with one day off within a seven-day period. Once our regular season contests begin, practice seasons will be limited to three sessions in a Monday through Friday period. Our practice sessions at Holliston will tentatively take place on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We will limit these practice sessions to two hours. The EA has limited the amount of players, coaches, on any one playing surface to 25 people. Training activities for moderate and higher-risk sports must be performed in cohorts of the same small group of individuals that performs all training activities together and without interacting with other individuals in cohorts. Cohorts can be no larger than 10 participants, and the same cohort assignments must be used for every training session or class. Participants cannot be members of multiple cohorts, nor can cohort assignments rotate. Training areas or boundaries on our fields or courses must be marked so the training cohorts are separated in all directions by at least 14 feet. Cohort sizes should be capped by the number of available training areas based on the size of the facility, and in no event more than 25 people on a playing surface. Our spectator policy for the fall. After much deliberation and discussion, Tri-Valley League has unanimously decided to implement a no-spectator policy for the 2020 Fall One season for all TBL contests, regardless of sport or level. This incredibly difficult decision comes with mixed emotions as many of the TBL principals and athletic directors are also parents who fully understand and appreciate the joys of watching your child compete. All decisions surrounding our Fall One season were made with safety as the number-one priority, and we believe this was the most prudent course of action to ensure the safety and health of our students, coaches, and families within the communities of the TBL. Although much of the current circumstances are out of our control, we're collectively doing everything possible to safely conduct our cross-country, field hockey, golf, and soccer seasons for our student athletes. And you don't want anything jeopardize our school's ability to provide athletic opportunities for our students in the 2020-2021 school year. Each district is working hard to provide live streaming options so the families can watch their children compete in real time. I've already spoken with HCAT, and they are on board with live streaming as many games as possible this fall, if not all of them. We typically have great cooperation from them with their live streaming Facebook capabilities, and they were more than happy to help out. Talking to some of the other schools, some of the same things will be happening with their local cable stations to get people to be able to watch as many of our games as possible. The individual sport modifications. Due to the various guidance for athletics put forth by the EEA and adopted by the MIAA, various sports will see rule changes and modifications to their play for the upcoming school year. Although we do not like the idea of drastic changes to the way games, meets, and matches are played, we must follow all rules and regulations to have the safest possible athletic contest for all involved players, coaches, and officials. The MIAA sport committees have issued their individual sport modifications, and those are currently being reviewed by the Tri-Valley League A.D.s. Sport modifications will be included in a link on our athletic website, as well as in an email blast that I will send out to the high school community. There are too many to list even attempt to go over right now for all the sports that we will be playing. There are modifications that make the sport as safe as possible, but some of the sports will look very different than they have in the past. But again, in the name of safety and to get our kids out there, it's the most important thing that we abide by these rules at this time. Transportation. We will still continue to offer transportation to all our athletic contests. All guidelines regarding social distancing must be adhered to, and this will require more buses than usual for athletic trips. JV and varsity teams will no longer be be able to travel on the same bus to events. Face coverings must be worn at all times while traveling on school transportation. No eating or drinking will be allowed on school transportation and seating arrangements will be adhered to. By playing our games on the weekends as well, it also helps us in knowing that we'll have transportation available. Where we're going to have to take multiple buses where we used to take one, there was a serious question about the ability to be able to offer all the schools be able to get transportation to and from their games on the weekdays, but we know, talking to our transportation company that on the weekends, we should not have any issues with bus availability or drivers for that matter. And we'll still allow kids if, if with, if their parents would like to take them to the games. Usually parents email me and let me know if we have kids who aren't interested in taking the bus, that won't be an issue as well. Users fees, user fee will remain the same for the upcoming school year. There will still be a need for equipment, transportation, increased busing as I just talked about to maintain safety, game officials, event staff, police detail, PPE, social services along with other COVID protocols that would be utilized by the user fees. Physicals for the student athletes remain the same. They all need to be current within the last 13 months and the visit needs to have been conducted in person. Our registration for sports has been open for a couple of months, so we've been receiving, we held off on collecting user fees, but we've been receiving physicals and registration updates just so we know how many kids we're going to be participating this fall. So event day management, the big change, as I said, there won't be any fans at any of our athletic events during fall one. I mentioned HCAT and their ability to livestream. Most of the information below here is similar to what I read for the practice protocols as far as we'll have hand sanitizer available on the, at the benches, disinfectant wipes. Benches need to be a certain length apart from each other. We'll be utilizing probably for soccer and field hockey, the whole length of one side of the field will be, you know, increasing our start line and finish line for cross country and golf will be, you know, in there for some, but just so being distant from each other. As I mentioned too, everybody's going to have to bring their, their own water bottle. So as I said, it's similar, it's going to be similar to youth sports again with you show up, you show up when you're supposed to be at the field, ready to, ready to play with your own water, no sharing of water or equipment or anything like that. Practice days management, again, very similar to the logistics that I've talked about. We're just following everything to the letter of the law at the field as far as hand sanitizer, disinfectant being available. We don't want kids arriving more than five minutes before their start time, you know, in their gear, ready to practice and play. Our athletic trainer will be available at all athletic practice sessions with the exception of golf. And also another thing about having the games on Saturday and Sunday and trying to have the games close in time to each other. It enables our athletic trainer to be there for all the events instead of having things spread out over town. So bring everything to the high school was very important, especially during this time. And all team members must wear face coverings with the exception of what is allowed for the EA and MIAA. When active drill teaching isn't going on, team members must remain socially distanced. They just mentioned our athletic training, our athletic trainer. Policies will be different in our athletic training room where usually it's an open door policy and kids stop in to get treatment or talk about an injury, get tape, get ice. Before they come in now, they'll have to wash their hands and use hand sanitizer. They're going to have to sign in. There'll be a limited number of students allowed in there at all times. Everybody who's in there must wear a fixed covering at all times. If anyone has or begins to show symptoms of COVID-19, he, she will report directly to the athletic trainer for assessment. Again, that, that really helps with our athletic trainer being on campus, especially for those weekend games. Anyone with symptoms must be picked up by a family member and if at an away contest will not be allowed to travel home on the team bus. If you did not attend school or the remote session due to feeling ill, you're required to stay home and are not allowed to attend the contest, practice session. Another big rule change that the MIAA discussed is rule 40, which is the coaching out of season rule. With school approval, you could have the available, the option this year to have any of your sports, any of your coaches coaching at any time during the season. Tri Valley League athletic directors and principals were in unanimous agreement that this was not the year to waive that rule. In fact, most of the, all of the schools in our district for administrative purposes for the MIAA, we're in District Seven, which includes all the schools in the Bay State League and Hockamuck League. We have all voted not to waive the rule this year. We feel like if this is the, this is not the year to open this up. Due to the stringent rules pertaining to COVID-19 precautions, all athletic departments need to adhere to as well as the liability of any and all set practice sessions by teams out of season. We feel would be much too difficult and unsafe to manage at this time. We continue to allow our coaches who are out of season to meet with their team candidates, but those meetings must continue to be optional. Cannot be any expectation that a student athlete attend any meeting that is considered out of season based on the seasons listed above. Those sport specific physical activity or direct coaching practices will be allowed. So rule 40 will stay in place this year for us and for all District Seven schools. Now on this last slide, just a couple of key terms that I'm going to ask our coaching staff and our student athletes, you know, to remember. That's health and safety, patience and adaptability, wear your mask, distance yourself, yourselves and wash your hands. So that's it for my slideshow.
Thank you, Matt. That was really, I know how difficult this is for you. I can see it in your face. I can see it that, you know, to the core, this, you have worked so hard and this is, that was really a, a lot of difficult information to share and, and they don't have high school children and, and the, the no spectators really like hit me hard for the minute. So I, I think we need to acknowledge this is, it's a hit. And I appreciate that you were able to join us tonight and share all that information. I, I really truly appreciate it. That was really informative.
Yeah, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to do it and, you know, everything that we have discussed and, you know, the athletic directors have been getting together frequently, multiple times per week over the last couple of weeks, was just about doing everything we could to just give the kids an opportunity to play. You know, we know how important that athletics are to their social, emotional wellbeing. And, you know, we feel that the plan we came up with gives them the ability to play in a safe environment. And just continue to reiterate that this is the plan as of right now, this very moment. You know, we're, we're going to be monitoring things over the next couple of weeks until we get, you know, closer to our start date. So the possibility that, that things could, could change. You know, we're still in a waiting game for, for some things and it's kind of the type of situation right now where every question that, that somebody brings up or I talk about with Nicole or other athletic directors, it leads to four or five additional questions. So there are still a lot of, you know, a lot of things that, that we need to, you know, that we're going to be finding out over the next couple of weeks. So just reiterating that this is the plan as of this very moment right now. And, and it could, it could, it's going to continue to evolve and change just like it has been, just like it has been in regards to, you know, school returning and, but we think we've come up with, with a plan that will work and keep everybody as safe as possible.
And I do think that your plan is, is thorough and I, I'm, I think you're, you know, the A.D.s have done a really good job. Can you just talk a little bit more to the point about, because you made a very poignant statement about, you know, giving the students an opportunity to at least have something, you know, in terms of their sport. And I know that this isn't under your jurisdiction, if you will, but for the middle school, have you worked with Parks and Rec to come up with some programs for the middle schoolers? Because I, I think they're, they're an awesome group and they have done some really great things. And I'm just, I want to have that conversation because I feel like that too is another group of students who really need that outlet. So I don't know if you, have you had any further just, you know?
So when this, when I found out that that was the situation with the middle school, I reached out to Mary McNamara at the middle school, who's the middle school athletic coordinator, and to David Jordan to let them know that this is what, that the situation was with all of the Bay Valley middle school teams. So I have not had any specific conversations regarding that. And I don't know if they have because typically, you know, logistically running those sports goes through them at the middle school. We really don't have any oversight, but it, it was just such a, such a big part of our discussion where, you know, we were just focusing on, you know, the high school for this fall.
No, I appreciate that. Dawn, before I calling you, Nicole had, it looked like she unmuted herself and I interjected really quickly. My apologies, Nicole.
Oh, no worries. Thanks for catching that. So I, I just wanted to add and Matt is well versed in all of the details as you saw through the presentation. I just wanted to add that when you do have a chance to look at the sports modifications for each sport, that was a very extensive process to get to that point. I happen to be on the sports medicine committee. So I'm on the committee for the MIAA and it's a group of mostly athletic directors as well as physicians, some principals, members of the MIAA and others throughout the state. And each individual sport committee met and they crafted their proposal for the modifications for their individual sport. So for example, the soccer committee was able to meet several times and craft pretty extensive recommendations for modifications. Each one of those sports then presented at the sports medicine committee meeting and we went through and were able to give feedback from a health perspective. Some of the physicians were also able to ask questions of the specific sport. And then there were really sort of a back and forth as to some suggestions, some adjustments that needed to be made prior to the sports medicine committee then voting on the modifications for each individual sport. Those modifications then went to the COVID task force for the MIAA, which is also working closely with the state. And then that went through the board of directors and again, was in conjunction with the commissioner for education as well as the governor to make sure that everything was, was really lined up. So I just wanted to mention that because it was incredibly extensive, incredibly painful and incredibly lengthy process. And I say painful because everyone is passionate about the sport that they've devoted their lives to and to see those modifications put in place that make it feel as if your sport may not be the sport that you've been playing for years and years. That's a really difficult piece to take on. That being said, everyone had a vested interest in figuring out ways that the sports could be modified so that they could be as safe as possible to play. So when you look at those modifications and as Matt mentioned, there'll be a link on our athletic website and they're also linked on the MIAA website. You know, there's a lot to them. So I just wanted to mention that because there's, there's just tremendous amount of medical expertise and also athletic directors and principals and a host of people that have been part of this as we've gone along. And those all came to the Tri Valley League and then the Tri Valley League was able to meet and it's a fantastic group of athletic directors and they really brought some very smart decisions or recommendations to our joint meeting of the principals and the athletic directors. And we were all, you know, we found ourselves all on the same page. And again, in the best interest of providing the athletic opportunities for students, but also doing it in a way that was going to be as safe as possible and adhering to the pretty significant restrictions in terms of number of students that can participate, distance, masks and, and all of those pieces. So I just wanted to mention that so that I think the community also understands that there was a tremendous amount that went into arriving at this, at this lovely presentation that Matt figured.
No, of course. Thank you. Dawn?
Hey, Matt. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the work you did on this. I have a number of questions. I want to confirm the bus aspect because I think that sometimes we have in the past had coaches that are really vehement that everybody's got to take the bus. And we may have a situation here where families may have opted remote, they may have at-risk people at home and they may not want their kid to take the bus. So I want to be clear, we're not going to mandate that kids take the bus. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And volleyball, was there any discussion about moving that outside when they eventually hopefully have their season at some point in the spring or later?
Well, they're scheduled to be in the fall floating, fall season two, which is February 22nd. So as of right now, that's, that's, you know, that, the sports that we're going to be playing outside during that time bring up issues with weather, but volleyball being able to control our facility indoors, we shouldn't, you know, as long as everything, you know, is fine COVID wise, there won't be any issue with playing volleyball during that timeframe.
Okay. And I was a little confused on one part, so I want to make sure I clarify because there's probably something I missed. You said under the EEA playing guides, only 25 players and coaches on one playing surface.
That's on, yeah, so that, that's on the actual playing surface. So soccer with 22 and two officials is 24.
Good. You're not capping your teams at 11 and 11 for soccer plus a coach for each side. You could still have 20 kids on a soccer team, correct?
Yeah. So, right. We're going to dress 20 kids on game day, but that doesn't mean that there may not be 24 kids on a varsity soccer roster. But due to those guidelines, if we cap at 20, so between, that would be 40 players, two officials, probably three to four coaches, myself, the athletic trainer and event staff. So you get to 50 pretty quickly. So that's why we, we capped game day rosters at 50 for that, you know, for that area inside the field.
Okay. An additional question was about, it goes back to the spectators and the videoing. And I really appreciate that you're going to try and get the videoing, but if I'm to understand the model, Holliston would go to Norton, right? Maybe all of their girls, their girls cross country, their girls soccer, JV varsity, their girls field hockey, JV and varsity. They all go to Norton and play Norton away on Saturday and then all the girls play at home on Sunday when the boys flip. You have potentially like four or five teams and if that's if you have no freshman teams playing here in Holliston on Saturday, is that right? And we're going to try and videotape JV too, so.
That, that is the plan to try to get as many of the games, including JV's filmed as possible.
Okay. And cross country meets, we're going to try and catch videos of the finish?
Yeah. And again, I just, I talked to them about it today. They were receptive and on board. And that may be, we haven't figured out times yet for the events, but you know, we're, we're going to do everything we can to work with them. Once I, I have the schedule of who will be playing in what sports on certain days, but now it's just implementing what times we'll be playing. And, and so I'll work with them to make sure. I think it would be great if they could film the, obviously they're probably not going to be like the marathon and out on the course, but if they could, they could film the, the start and the finish and run over to, you know, the girl soccer game that's starting 10 minutes later. I mean, it's probably going to be busy out there, but I'm hopeful that we'll be able to make it work. That we'll have as many opportunities to have stuff streamed as possible.
You're going to have to cheer really loud for the rest of us that are sitting in our cars or sitting at home watching. Okay. The last one is just to reiterate what Stacy said. We had a, a robust middle school volleyball program. We had a robust boys and girls cross country program at the middle school. Over 65 kids, all paying athletic fees participating in this cross country program. That's dead. I hear, I hear what you're saying about town sports. Holliston youth soccer, tons of kids signed up. Holliston youth field hockey, that's a go, but we don't have programs in place for those 65 plus kids that have been training for weeks too, for what they hoped would be their season. And that robust girls volleyball season that we, that, you know, they were anticipating. So I guess if we can just continue to reach out and see what Parks and Rec and if Mary McNamara So I guess if we can just continue to reach out and see what Parks and Rec and if Mary McNamara or David Jordan could connect in some way with them, even if this, these kids had like training and inter-town competition or just practices.
Yeah. And even if, I mean, if they wanted to take on running something as a club to give, you know, an opportunity, and they might even be able to play, play volleyball outside on the field for a couple of months or a month or whatever it is. But they, you know, I, that would, decision would, would lie with them, I think, with David, if, if they wanted to take that on. But I, yeah, I think any opportunity, I mean, I'm going to sit down with the Parks and Rec Director and we're going to try to come up with a lot, you know, these are the same conversations we've had with all of our athletic directors in our league, just trying to offer what we can and give as many opportunities as we can during this time.
Okay. Thank you.
Cynthia?
Hi, Matt. Thanks for being here tonight. That was a great presentation. Thank you. Very thorough. I have a couple of questions. There's a couple that are quick and then one that's like maybe a little more detail. The first one is about whether, where all of our coaches are from, because just in terms of where we're cohorting, are all of our coaches from Holliston or are they coming from other towns at all?
No, they're, they're, they're not all from Holliston.
They're not all from Holliston, okay.
So, some of them are, some of them live here, some of them teach in the district, but others don't.
Okay. The other is, well, this one, my quick one. What happens if we have to go all remote? We're just not really sure yet. I'm guessing, right? So meaning, will we still hold these sports if we have to go full remote?
Nicole, do you want to take this or do you?
I'm having to jump in.
Sorry, I know I'm throwing you on your spot, but I'm just, you know.
No, it's fine. So, you know, we are following the MIA guidelines, the state guidelines, and they are evolving as we move along. Right now, based on the fact that we have an approved hybrid model through school committee and that we're continuing to, you know, work through the final stages to move forward with the hybrid model, we are, again, following all the guidelines and everything that the TVL has put in place. We are all set to move forward with athletics. If that were to change, if, and again, please, you know, if all of a sudden we were to be fully remote tomorrow, if that was the decision, again, this is just based on your question, then we would be coming back to you and we would be saying, everything we talked about is still in place. However, now because we are starting fully remote, again, we're, we're not there, but if we were starting fully remote, then we would need school committee to make a decision as to whether or not we would move forward with athletics or whether we would not have the athletic season. Right now, because we're starting as hybrid, that is not the case. But if we were to be fully remote moving forward, so for example, Millis is fully remote to start the school year. Their school committee voted, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but their school committee voted to still move forward with athletics. And one of the reasons for the presentation, I think, is because it's really important for the community to understand all the details that are involved in athletics and for all of you to understand as well. But if we were to, if our model were to change over the next week or two, we would be coming back to you then with a decision that the school committee would need to make in terms of the best interest of students and the community moving forward. And that sort of, you know, I, there are a lot more details to that, but that's.
Okay.
I know Dr. Cuska is, is well versed in this as well. And so she would probably be initiating that conversation with the school committee.
Okay. And then my last question is, can you just, just expand a little bit on your discussion about the rule, the Rule 40? I'm not sure that everybody kind of understands what that's about. And if you could just expand a little bit upon that, that would be great.
So Rule 40 is in place. You know, I think it's in place so kids don't feel pressure to do other sports when their sport is not in season. There, there's a lot of talk about that rule every year. And the MIAA just decided this year to say with school approval, you can get rid of that rule, which, you know, we all felt collectively that, you know, during a time of a pandemic is not a good year to do that, even though we did have kids who missed out on their spring season. It just brings up a whole number of questions. And we're stretched for field space typically in the fall, which will actually be a little more open this fall without football. But we would be talking about field space. Our athletic trainer is going to be busier this year probably than ever with implementing new, you know, protocols and procedures. And if she's dealing with someone with COVID symptoms and somebody gets hurt in, in the off-season baseball practice, that she's going to have to run out there. So just logistically, it brought up a lot of issues, you know? And then, you know, do we have kids, do we have kids sign up or are kids paying towards that? And so we just decided that, you know, it's best for the kids to focus this fall on the sports that they're going to be playing this fall. And, you know, this just was not the time to loosen those restrictions. So our coaches can still, I think it's still going to be virtual meetings this fall. But if coaches wanted to connect with their kids and do virtual workouts or have meetings, they're still, we still want the coaches to make contact and, you know, to be in touch with their kids. But it's just, you know, we're not going to allow them to be running practice and to be, you know, taken from the resources that, that we're going to have this fall. And I think, you know, this fall is going to be so different that we just need to focus everything on our current season.
One of the other significant factors, I think, in the decision for the Tri Valley League was the fact that, as I described before, all of those individual sports, the committees for those individual sports met and spent a tremendous amount of time really crafting recommendations for how to play the sport in the safest way possible, given our restrictions. That went through the, the Sports Medicine Committee and the MIA and, and really was, was well vetted through that process. They have not had a chance to do that for the winter season, for the fall two season and for the spring season. So we would be sending our athletes into out-of-season practices without the benefit of those sports modifications, having gone through physicians and committees. And that, I think, was very concerning to the Tri Valley League also, just in terms of the safety of our, our players. And so in, in addition to all the reasons that Matt stated.
Okay. So there's nothing to say that they couldn't do, you know, Zoom workouts, for example, but they can't just?
Absolutely. I think a lot of that stuff happened in the spring and I would hope, I would encourage coaches to reach out and contact their kids and keep in touch and keep them motivated and positive.
Great. Thanks, Matt. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Nicole.
Ann Louise, then Andy, then Lisa.
Hi. You did tell, sorry, I'm going to apologize for some background noise. So I have a few questions, but Matt, first I want to thank you. That was incredibly thorough and I know how much time and effort went into that. Nicole, I know you were so involved in this and I, I want to thank you in advance because I think the upcoming months are going to be a real challenge. My concern, my first question is, I'm not as concerned about what happens if we go remote because I think we all know, there are so many different reasons that contribute to that decision for a district. And, and it may have nothing to do with the factors that might influence whether athletics could be played. However, what happens if another town in our little pod goes from green to yellow or red? Like, is there a threshold where we determine that particular district is, is going to sort of be in suspension from playing for any reason? Suspension is maybe a bad word there, but do you know what I'm saying?
So we had, one of the, you know, part of the thinking with going with the pods of six and six was that if a district got to the point, and if they got to the red, I think if it's in the red, you cannot currently have sports, right? Correct, Nicole?
Yes, correct.
So the thinking is if one district in our pod goes that route, we would still have five schools left to play in our pod. You know, another reason why I think the pods work on the weekends is if something does happen, if we have a suspected case or Hopkinton has a suspected case, we know that our teams only played and interacted with the Hopkinton kids over the weekend. So it's another, you know, benefit of the, you know, of the pod system.
So, but is there, is it the colors or is there a threshold? And I'm assuming, I'm going to assume you're all going to be in regular communication, but is it, you know, if the town goes yellow, that this, or is it not that simple? Like, is there a threshold that triggers play being stopped?
Right now, the, the commissioner has said that yellow or green, that the school committee should feel fine to move forward. However, if it does turn to red, that would, that would change the case.
Okay. I wasn't aware about the yellow piece, so I appreciate that. All right. So my second question pertains to coaches and training, et cetera. So the sports specific modifications as well as all of the requirements around, you know, mask and safe play, et cetera, et cetera, and all the things you started talking about, what is the training going to look like for coaches? And are they, you know, I'm seeing they're required to attend, but how is this going to be? Like, there's only one, Matt, like, how is this all going to be enforced and all of that?
Well, we typically have a coaches meeting, a mandatory coaches meeting to go over all our policies, procedures and protocols prior to the season. That is definitely going to happen. And it's probably going to happen, I would say, maybe even more than once. Typically, our coaches need their CPR and AED certification and concussion certification. The National Federation of High School Sports has a COVID course that the coaches are going to be required to take. The coaches already have been, I've been, I've talked to all of our Fall One coaches probably multiple times. So they've been reading the, they all, as soon as those, the sport modifications came out, they started reading them over right away. But that's why I think too, once we get into practice, having two weeks of practice, having two weeks for coaches outside of golf, because the golf rules really change. But the other sports, to have two weeks of re-teaching sports that kids have played their whole lives. So from the sport aspect, that's going to be, you know, the coaches really teaching what they need to teach in the, in the two weeks. But prior to that, myself and Nicole Siglin will have, you know, mandatory trainings, making sure that we need, I mean, the, the, everything is so different that it's not, you know, one nice little contained document for them that we're going to be, I actually spoke to her earlier tonight, I'm going to be meeting with her tomorrow. And we can start the process now of how we're going to implement everything and how we're going to train our coaches. But it's, we're really fortunate to have a full-time athletic trainer on our staff that, you know, all these health, safety and wellness things, you know, she can oversee and, you know, she and I can be there every day during the week, there on the weekends to, you know, assist in any way we can. But it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of learning for all of us.
The MIA is also offering sports-specific trainings. They're working on putting together sports-specific trainings so that they can gear that towards athletic directors who have questions about some of the really sort of specific changes for each of the different sports. And then so they can have those available for coaches as well. So I think it's that, that combination between Holliston trainings as well as what's offered through the MIA and the national organizations.
So could I ask that captains, you know, it may not be as rigorous, but the captains get trained at a little more specific level here because often there are like assistant coaches out on the field and they are also the mentors and the leaders on the team that set the guidepost for behavior. And I think it's really important that they have a really full understanding of all of this. So that's just, well, maybe that was part of it, but if it isn't, maybe there's a way to kind of give them a modified version of the coaches' training.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then the last piece, well, since the last day. And this may be for kids, all of the sanitizing and cleaning and all of that, like, we've got a whole program set aside to deal with this inside the building. Is it the same staff managing it for the practice fields and equipment? Or is, how is that being handled? And or is Matt going to have to run out there at 6:00 AM and like spray some?
That'd be 5:30, Matt has to run out. We actually haven't talked about what we're going to do about that yet, in all honesty. You know, supply-wise, we can probably provide, staffing-wise will be much more of a challenge, just because it's outside the field, the times are variable. We're going to have to figure out how that gets done. It might be through game day staff, it might be through, you know, again, there, there's lots of solutions. Whether any of them is the right one, we'll find out. But, you know, I'm, I'm not worried at this point in time, so.
Okay. All right. So just keep us posted on that, especially if there's going to be any staff requirements or additional costs. And then I guess this is the last big medillia. So, you know, over the summer, at the summer town meeting, we were lucky enough to have the town support us in the request for funds to rebuild, rebuild committee and saw this committee and field this fall. If this, if circumstances allowed, and this is weird, we're like halfway, halfway to having circumstances allow it. So I guess I'll just put this on the table. Is there a way to accommodate that given the reduced need for the field? I know it hasn't been eliminated. I had a daughter playing field hockey. I know soccer uses the field, but I'm deeply concerned that we are going to miss the opportunity to rebuild this field for the money that we have and in the time that we have. So I'm just wondering, because it, it, there might be a way, the season's starting later, there, there may only be a few weeks, if we were to start sooner rather than later on the field, where we could get it done without compromising the full season? I don't know. Maybe there are other turf fields, you know, I don't know if we could leverage Marshall Street to support the kids. I'm just, just wondering where this stands.
How would we do that, Ann Louise? So, so I'm the field coordinator for Marshall Street. We run soccer games from about eight in the morning until 4:00 PM on Saturdays. So that wouldn't work under this model where we're going to have high school playing on Saturdays. But I, I know football has been moved to the spring, but I want to see field hockey play and soccer, boys, girls, varsity, freshmen.
Look, I don't want to problem solve it here. I don't know. I'm just wondering if this came up and if there, you know, if there's, I guess what I'm saying, Dawn, is if there is an opportunity to problem solve this and get creative around it and look for opportunities to address this and maybe, you know, take advantage of, of what we can in terms of the delayed season, et cetera. Maybe there won't be, I don't know how long it takes to do this project. I know it's not three months, but I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to pull this off because I am deeply concerned that the money will not be available to us in the spring.
Ann Louise, the capital sits there until we use it, so, or until the school committee returns it, so.
Yeah, but the cost, the cost may very well change. That was sort of the premise under which we got it approved.
And, and doing a field, and doing a field is much more than doing the field. It's also tearing up the old one.
Yeah, yeah. I know.
The timeframe would be between three and six weeks to do it, in all honesty. And that's going to be very weather dependent. You know, it's not.
They'll start games in three weeks, but they'll finish, not, they finish, what, November 20th? So if there's any ability to do it between November 20th and when the snow flies, but.
Again, that would be something we would, we would potentially try to do. You know, I, I, you know, I, I worry about the, the visibility or the visual of us saying that three sports don't matter, boys soccer, girls soccer and, and field hockey. I just.
I want to, I want to be abundantly clear. I am not saying that. I am not saying they don't matter. I tried to acknowledge that upfront and was trying to simply address the fact that there's, you know, 20%, 30% reduction in need for the field. It's not saying those sports don't matter. Just putting it out there, I think we have an obligation to ask and, you know, the answer comes back now. It comes back now.
Andy?
Matt, thank you for your, your presentation. It sounds like there's been a lot of beside, behind the scenes work to get this off the ground. My, I don't know if it's a question or concern, but I know that in the past, we've had student-led captains practices, things like that. I have a significant concern that particularly what you mentioned with the change in gameplay and all the new protocols and cohorts for students in the field, we're going to hopefully strictly prohibit our students from doing that. Is that correct?
Yes. That, that's always the case that, you know, anything where the kids are getting together on their own is not MIA-sponsored, school-sponsored, you know, the coaches are well aware. I can't tell you how many emails that they've gotten about that. At the same time, we can't stop the kids from getting together, so. So we are trying to make sure if they do get together, that they're following all the guidelines and social distancing and wearing masks. But we are, we are hopeful that that, that is not happening.
Okay, thanks.
Lisa?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a quick thank you. I think this was really well thought out and I, I like the, the pods in particular jumped out at me because I hadn't heard that before and I feel like that's the kind of attention to detail that we need. We can't eliminate risk, but we can mitigate it. And that, you know, that's a way of cutting that pool of risk in half, which I think is really smart. So I think, you know, you did a really good job on this. Thank you, Nicole and Matt both. The only concern I have is a little more general. It's just, you know, the high school in general and it's what you guys were just talking about. You know, I feel like this is a group, high school age kids is a group that we're, it's really hard to keep them from socializing. And I, I just want to kind of put out there that, you know, I, I think it makes sense to go forward with sports. I think this is a good plan. But, you know, I think the New York Times reported today, I was just looking it up. I think it was like 50,000 cases at colleges across the country of COVID. And colleges are obviously different than high schools, but they're very similar in the sense that it's extremely difficult for us to limit the cohorts the way it is with younger kids. We've got all the extracurricular stuff, including sports, and they're socializing a lot. So I just think it's really important that as we go forward with sports, that we are really adamant with parents and students alike that it is up to them to help us keep the schools open and help us keep sports going on. This is going to be a very short in-person school year if parents and families and kids don't really take this seriously. And, and frankly, I think we need to see a change in behavior from what we've seen this summer. I think, you know, we've, we've all seen high school kids hanging out here, there and everywhere without masks on, right? And I'm not, that's not a Holliston thing, I'm just saying in general. But I do just want to emphasize that the messaging has to go out over and over and over again. And I know you guys get this, I just want to say this for the people watching at home and, and just to kind of put a, put a highlighter on it that, you know, this really is up to us as a community to make this work and make this happen. So thanks again for all your hard work.
Dawn?
Matt, and I'm sure you're going to communicate out to parents, but can we also make this presentation available? And then following up on Lisa's point, as she said, highlight it. If we could add one more thing in there so that the community does understand if we go red, because we have more cases, if we go red, these sports will get shut down. So while everyone's hoping to get started, what, on October 10th for games? If we're red by that point, this never happens. So it really is up to them.
It's my plan, like I said earlier, I'm going to put the slideshow on the athletic website and put together an email blast to all high school families, hopefully tomorrow, with this, with a link to the, to the slides and a link to the sport modifications.
And Susan, can you add it to the fall reopening tab as well on the district website? Just so that it's another location that would be appreciated.
Sure, yeah, Matt, when you send it, just copy Dan and me and we'll get that done. Thank you, and thank you, thank you both, Nicole and Matt, for your time tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Cusco, Dr. Patello and Mr. Boudet so we can talk about an update on reopening.
Sure, I, we actually had, let me just grab my, a couple of things happened this week that was very exciting. We welcomed our staff back on Monday. They were remote on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Today was our very first in-person day back. But on Monday, we had a brief Zoom welcome to our staffs and administrators and myself. All were in the high school auditorium, physically distant with our masks on. And I do have a couple of slides I might show you from that morning, if you'd like to see those very briefly and before I move on with some other updates.
Please do, I thought it was really, I thought you did a great job on Monday.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I'm just going to show, I'm not going to show the whole thing, it was about 20 minutes long, lengthy, but there was a, a nice video that I think kind of says where we all are at the moment. And a student message, so I'm going to play that. I might have to mute myself, but I do have my sound on, so give me a thumbs up if you, I see Mary Catherine on my screen, so you can give me a thumbs up if you hear it.
Hello, I'm Dr. Khalid Mumineh and welcome to the 2020-2021 school year. As we all know, we are living in unprecedented times and I believe it's appropriate for me to begin with one of my favorite poems, "The Road Not Taken" by Robert Frost. Two roads diverged in a yellow wood, and sorry I could not travel both. And be one traveler long I stood and looked down one as far as I could.
I got this stuck. Have you heard of kid president? Well, I kid superintendent, and I think we all need a pep talk.
The past couple of months haven't been easy, huh? A global pandemic, politics, social unrest, earthquakes, fire natos, tiger king! That show is not what I thought it was about. Your glasses bugging up when you wear a mask? Are you writing on toilet paper? The unmute and mute button, you're unmute! Spider manta flies, desert locusts and murder hornets. I mean, where do they even come from, man? You get the idea. Play 20 has been kicking our butts. I can see butts, right? It's okay to feel overwhelmed right now, or anxious, or nervous about remote learning. Your bit moody's look awesome, by the way. Maybe you're worried about students. I'm worried about myself and everybody else. But remember, we're all doing the best we can, and that's all that matters. Kids aren't looking for perfection, we're just looking for you to be present. I know that because I'm a kid. So let's be good humans. Cause if you're anti-tort buffish, then sprinkle kindness. By the way, I hate sprinkles. And let's give each other grace, not grief. We're all in this together, and we've got to support each other. It hurts! But you know this already, because that's what people do. You're resilient and resourceful. When times get tough, you know how to pull together, no cap. And there's still plenty of good stuff in the world, right? Like Samantos Krant. I see! And Jay from cheer, he's awesome! And Lizzo, my mom likes her music a lot, a lot! And funny TikTok videos. And Sharpey, you gotta love those! And we've got you! You are good, no scrap that, you are great. We need you here. No matter your job, you each have something special and amazing to offer. You can do virtually anything! Get it, virtually? It's a joke, seriously, you can do this! You are the champion Rita Pearson was talking. I believe in you, and I know you'll stay RSD proud, no matter the distance! It's kind of like Doc was trying to say. Two roads diverge in a wood, and right now, we've got to take the one less traveled. You know, and try to territory and all. I know it might get a little scary, actually a lot scary, but you've got this. Put on your favorite fuzzy socks, no one can see your feet on Google meets, but definitely throw your pants. And press forward with a positive attitude, it's going to make all the difference.
Hello, I'm Dr. Khalid Mumineh.
Sorry, lost my thing there. So just, it felt that as your interim superintendent, that the message from this kid superintendent was much, much more powerful than mine. He said it very eloquently, that we're in this together, we're champions, our students are depending upon us. They need us to be their heroes right now, and that is the message that we are opening this year with. I love this quote from Dalai Lama, when it, when educating the minds of our youth, we must not forget to educate their hearts. And it's so true, we have our population of students and our staff. We've all gone through a lot of trauma and we need to support one another. And this is the time to gather together and be a team. I won't go through the rest of the slide, but I will end with, this is our roller coaster ride that we can't get off right now. It's not what we all expected, it's not what we all want. We all want what's best for children and we're in it for that reason. I feel that on the left, we can be that group, we can hold on tight and anxiously ride along in panic. Or on the right, we can be the champions and we can ride along this very challenging roller coaster ride with and for our students. We can do it together. We are Holliston and I think we've got this. We're going to keep forging ahead and do what's best for kids. So it's really hard in these times, just exit out of the screen, that we are dealing with so much and we have a lot of anxiety, staff, students, we're all in that boat. But at the same token, there's a lot of positive things happening here. We, as I mentioned, on Monday, we welcome back everybody. And Stacy Rafi, thank you, our school chair, for meeting us as well and welcoming staff. Our HFT president did an opening welcome for staff as well as Dr. Patello. And then the rest of the day was spent in the building, if possible, for some members and remotely to plan for the school year. We had our first in-person training today. We've done training on safety, we've done training curriculum-wise. We've done multiple different things that Dr. Patello might share a little bit more of the topics when he speaks. But I had heard really good things from our principals that this, and I had visited a couple of the buildings. Staff were very positive, still nervous because this is all new, but we have lots of safety protocols in place. There'll be more in-person training tomorrow and throughout the 15th. We are still looking and actively working towards our opening day of the 16th for students and still with an optimistic start for in-person learning as much as possible. But there are still a lot of challenges to overcome. We've made a lot of progress, meeting with our HFT and our union members, and we have worked out a lot of details. We really focused on safety and in addition to all the details on safety that you saw in our opening, our reopening plan for facilities and for health and wellness. We also developed a, I think about a 25-page safety, health and wellness manuals specific to staff. It is a great resource, it takes many of the facts, factors from our reopening plan, but then we added additional information for staff who are going to help support us with safety, health and wellness of our students related to COVID in our buildings. And I had that added as a link on our website. So even though it's made for staff, it has a lot of useful information for families as well, so please take a look at that. And in addition to that, we are really ironing out some details. As you know, many parents in the community, many of our, our staff members that are parents, childcare is also being considered because with school not starting until the 16th, doing even just right now with training, staff are compromised trying to get into the trainings. But also families that are starting in other towns in remote, some of our staff have challenges getting someone to watch their children. So because we have a challenge getting staff back for many reasons, we were very excited that we were able to use our extended day program and is now being called My Learning Space. So if you are a staff member of Holliston who have children that need some, in a hybrid model, for example, in another district or in Holliston, if you needed some extra time, from seven to three, we will have a childcare program open and it will be helping students that have remote learning in another district or in Holliston to get that support. We are hopeful that some of the slots will be left over for some of our community parents that are also struggling with childcare. So we'll be tuning in and Carol will be updating families about that, but we're really excited to be able to offer that. So we're making a lot of progress. But with that, we have had some late resignations for various reasons. Sometimes someone resigning and getting a position closer to home. We also, again, mentioning that childcare, we have some districts that are full remote to start and that means parents may not have any childcare, even if we can accommodate them a little bit. It can be challenging for them. So some parents may have opted to take a leave of absence based on the FCC RA leave program that has been put in place for COVID. So we're hearing about those last minute as well, for the obvious reasons that people are just struggling to find some opportunities. And then we also, as you know, we added a number of new positions to help support student safety in the building, such as health and safety monitors, some additional paraprofessionals to support. Because as we talked about in the past, our classes of potentially 24 students cannot be 24 in a room now. So that would require two rooms, but one teacher in many cases, but you still need another staff member. So our paraprofessionals are supporting in the second classroom and that means adding additional staff. We, all the districts around us are also adding additional staff to support their programs as well. And that creates limitations and gaps. We're all bargaining for hiring some of the same staff, some of our principals, they're interviewing staff members and they've already accepted a position in another district. So that is an obstacle and a hurdle that we are still going to work every day to overcome because it certainly is a, if we get to the 16th and don't have enough staff in place, that may move us to try to think creatively again. So not trying to be negative, we really are optimistic and positive that we're going to be able to work through these details. But there are still some challenges and not a lot of time to get through some of those and we will just forge ahead.
Can we just pause for one moment? It looked like Lisa raised her hand, did you use the raise hand option? I've never seen that.
No, I was clapping, I thought that was great. That was a little clapping emoticon.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead.
No, no, I think that was it, I was really happy to here today and I didn't get to all four buildings because we had a lot of other meetings to attend to. But at the two meetings I was at, I met with the nurses today because we continue to refine our safety policies and procedures. And next week, the nurses, they've been wonderful and so supportive and they are going to join us, the administrative team, on Wednesday, I believe we scheduled that, to do another Q and A for our administrators because we continue to get more and more questions from staff. And as our administrators continue to learn all the protocols with us, we want to make sure that we're all sharing the same messages and information collectively. So that's another layer that the nurses are doing for us. So, I mean, really, it was nice to see faces even, even while masked in person since most of my visits have been by Zoom, so that was exciting to get to see some of the faces behind the Zoom bombing that we've been doing. So that's about it for me right now.
Great, so I'm going to pause and let, let the committee ask some questions if they have them. And I think I really thought your presentation on Monday was awesome, but that kid in that video, oh my goodness, I just want to took those little cheeks and squeezed them and kissed him, oh my God, he was so cute. That was really a, that was a powerful video, so thank you for that. Dawn?
Hey, Susan, thank you very much. On the My Learning Place, do you have an idea of when you'll know spaces are available? And you said spaces for people in the community. I know there's teachers who teach in other, teachers who have kids and, and teach in other districts that are looking for spots as well. Are we opening it up to essential workers? Are we opening it up to other teachers that need help? When will, when we, when will we know about those spots?
Sure, some of those people have already reached out to Carol because they may have been on a waiting list for my, for the extended day. But now my Learning Space has a different thinking because it's really running from seven to three. And we are trying to do some part-time options for staff members that might have needs right before school or right after school because of the shortened day in either our district or another district. So some of those options are available. So she's really trying to maximize the ability to offer different options. But we are looking at some of those teachers that you are talking about as well because we're trying to support our surrounding communities because they are also trying to get their students back to school. And I had forgotten to mention, besides our childcare program, I've been working with the tri-county superintendents to see if we could, we've been trying for weeks now, even before the commissioner suggested this, that if we can help accommodate some of our, our family members that have students in Holliston but are teachers in other districts and they can provide some reciprocity and support us in the same way for some of our Holliston teachers who have children in other districts. We've been working together on that. So far, I was able to get some of our Holliston teachers support. We've been working together on that, so far I was able to get some of our Holliston teachers supported in Medway. The Medway superintendent has really offered to try to have their children, even if it's a hybrid model, try to maximize them for five days a week or four days a week, depending on the model. And the same with Natick has been very supportive, some of the other districts like us, we do have limitations. So even if we want to offer to either our parents in the community that have children or our teachers that have children that have needs, we, we, we still are maxed out. And that is also the reason for offering a seven to three model and not being able to offer the extended day is because truly, as you know, we've talked about. We need extra time to sanitize the buildings and minimize the cohorts in the building. So that is why we opted not to extend the day any further because then we would have limitations in getting all the classrooms and facilities clean for the next day.
Yeah, and can I just jump in, I can tell you guys that the notice went out today to existing extended day parents because I was one of those, so I got that notice. So they, Carol's already started letting people sign up for that. I think the, the way she worded the email, I don't care, actually, I can't remember if it was yesterday or today that I received it, that was that they knew that even with teachers, they were going to have enough spots to open it up to current extended day families, so she was doing that, she was, so that's already in process.
Thank you, that was sort of the message, I just didn't know if the, if the information had gone out yet. Great.
Cynthia?
I just wanted to add on to that, that not only we have our extended day, but I think My Village is also still offering some remote day childcare for people on their remote days. And then the YMCA, the Metro West YMCA is opening a program in Holliston as well, at the Christ of King Church as well, that will be available. It's, you know, the turf flyers are starting to already go up, so they have, they're having a program that they're starting there, so that should be another additional resource for parents.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Any other questions for Susan? Okay, oh, Lisa?
I have a question that's probably more for Peter about professional development, is now the time for that?
Okay, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we could get a quick update on what kind of, what the professional development looks like around improving online learning. Because I know that was a question I had gotten from a lot of parents and I just wanted to see if we could get a quick update on that.
Yeah, we're, I mean, the, basically the 11 days are broken down into 44 sessions, four sessions each day over the 11 days. There's a, a strong focus on exactly what you're talking about, on hybrid teaching models and in different ways you can approach that in order to do that effectively. On how to do different types of instruction in a hybrid model, so you know, what are some of the most effective ways to deliver content? What are the, some of the most effective ways to support kids in independent practices as well as collaborative work as well as, you know, shared discussions? How do you facilitate discussions using, you know, both whole group discussions, but especially small group discussions in a, in a kind of, in a, in a sophisticated way? That both is taking into account, you know, kids at home, if you're doing, if you're in a hybrid model as well as kids in person or if you're strictly in one mode doing that. So yeah, the, the, we've had, you know, Tom Reeve and, and, you know, a team from the, a team from the high school, a team from the middle school. Really working on presenting those models at the elementary school, it's, it's a, it's a team of folks, including Winnie Carey and Ally Curly. But it's also our consultant Cynthia Merrill because, as I've spoken about before, she's an expert in literacy, but she's also a technology expert. She's spoken at the National ISTI Conference, she's written books around digital learning as well as being, again, as well as literacy being her major focus. So she's working with our group for three days and in integrating the literacy approach, workshop approach, which is, which is very similar to some of the approaches that high school and middle school use, teachers are using, especially in this hybrid situation. Because you look at like having different types of teaching and how you do it effectively, so Cynthia is involved with that too. In addition, there's a, there's a number of different, you know, technology integration specific workshops going on. Some are mandatory and others are optional and they, they typically have, you know, more of an introductory version and an advanced version. You could do both if you, you decide that you want both, if you decide that you really need to start with the introductory, start with that. If you feel like you can skip that, so that might be, you know, kind of how do you Zoom effectively? And different ways to use breakout rooms as well as other functions within Zoom, it could be around. You know, for some people kind of using Google Classroom in a more robust way or Seesaw. So yeah, there's a, there's numerous sessions that are very much specific on pedagogy and how to approach learning in a hybrid environment. In addition to that, we've, you know, started with several sessions around health and safety and there's a district-wide session and then there are building-based sessions about that. We also are teaming up with a woman named Keisha Lamb, who's out of Aspect Valley Collaborative, who the administration has worked with. She's an incredibly powerful and skilled facilitator in issues of equity, bias and race. And so she's going to be working with all of our teachers in smaller, like 30-person sessions. And then also, it's going to be a, a bunch of our paraprofessionals, but not, not all of them. So that's going to kind of be our first phase of, of, of really digging into some of those issues. In addition to that, the high school and middle school have additional sessions related to equity and bias. And we're having an asynchronous session around how do you review curriculum for issues of bias and how to respond to it? So that work around equity and bias is a core part of, of the training as well. Yeah, so there's, you know, there's tons of going on and then in addition, there's ample time for teachers to work either in grade level groups or department groups in order to, you know, process and apply the new learning and also just think about how do I attack this year in this very unique circumstance? So tons of individual and especially collaboration time that can be structured, you know, based upon the professionals question of, of our educators. So it's, it's, it's an incredible 11 days, I wish we had it in better circumstances, but it's certainly, you know, something that, again. And the team of educators and administrators that are putting together, you know, these 11 days is, is extraordinary and just very thankful to them.
Can I just add to that, that because I haven't been able to attend all these trainings by Zoom, because we've had many, as I mentioned, staffing and personnel meetings as well competing. But Diane McLeod and the team have been, all this great work that they've done has been recorded, so people can watch that. So last night, it was very late, but I did want to watch some, I think it was last night, that trauma training that Jessica and Tessa, I believe it was, had done. And I was incredibly impressed, some of the work I had done on resilience and grit, which is something that we really, really need right now. We have a trauma-sensitive population, all of us are trauma-sensitive right now. And the work that they talked about was incredible and I just think we have some, just in my short time here, we have some real assets in our staff for what they can provide and produce in such a short time. Typically, this kind of training, we start planning for six months, last year we would have started planning for this year. And these additional days, as you know, were added very late by the commissioner, so yeoman's work to all of the people that have been part of that.
Yeah, and yeah, Susan, yeah, I missed that whole SEL bucket, we had, as Susan was talking about, students during a pandemic addressing trauma anxiety. We have another session on prevent, preventing and de-escalating challenging behaviors. Because kids are, you know, more heightened with the stress of, of the COVID world and how do we kind of, you know, respond to them? And then teaching the whole child during the pandemic, so there's a number of core SEL-based sessions as well as some optional or school-based sessions beyond that. So yeah, that, that whole bucket is incredibly important too.
That's awesome, thank you so much for that update.
Yeah, I can't stress enough the yeoman's work that's been going on and, and we need to acknowledge that because it really is 44 sessions in 11 days. That, that's not, you know, that's a lot of work and you all need to be commended for that and we appreciate that. I also asked, I reached out this week, oh, sorry, Dawn, did you have a question?
I did, it was just something I was trying to get some clarification on regarding the reopening plan for some of our kids coming out of French immersion and now entering the middle school. Because with the initial presentations, my understanding had been, at the time we were talking about the hybrid plan and even through the Q and As. That at the middle school level, the kids started school at eight, 10 and they had four core subjects. And I think this might be a question for you, Peter, and also for you, Susan, is that they, they have their social studies, their English, their math, their science. And then there was a 12 to 12:40 block. And I believed those French immersion kids are just now coming out of the program and into middle school would have some kind of live French or live Spanish. In addition to that, the kids leave either at 12:40 or they leave later on in the day. There's an asynchronous pre-recorded block that could be your PE class, it could be your art, it could be your chorus or your Spanish or French. But can you just clarify whether there will be any live learning occurring at the middle school between 12 and 12:40, please?
Yeah, my, my understanding that there, that would be an opportunity for some synchronous learning, looking kind of at the, at a document just to make sure that I'm correct.
Do you have the schedule in front of you, I don't, I don't have it in front of me right now.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's, I'll, I'll to triple check that with, with the people at the middle school. But yes, that 12 to 12:42 is time for time for world language as well as, so it could be some synchronous opportunities with, you know, a larger group, likely a larger group of kids and world language teachers, as well as I think they're also, as far as French immersion, trying to place the French immersion teacher strategically with cohorts of kids who are, who are French immersion kids.
Okay, so if we could just talk.
But that 12:42 is exactly how that's, you know, how much of it, because, because it's also time for, you know, maybe some EDFI rats synchronous work as well. I'm not sure exactly how that breaks down.
Okay, because my just, I, my concern is those French immersion kids, are they in a cohort of French immersion such that I would get that French live instruction? Or are they mixed in with all the other kids and then we're reshuffling them so that they get that? It, it seems like an important.
We're definitely not reshuffling them, I know that. I think when I'm saying live instruction, it still might be a remote instruction but synchronous. There would be some kids, again, the French immersion kids, I, I understand are being co-horted together. And so a French immersion teacher would be part of that cohort, but they can't be part of every cohort in every grade with all those French immersion kids.
Yeah, so they're trying to embed some of that.
They might be, you know, rotating not on a daily basis, but you know, weeks or months to different groups of kids who are French immersion co-horted to provide that face-to-face opportunity as well as, again, the synchronous opportunity that is not, not face-to-face though with all the kids.
Anne Louise?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of clarify a perspective, and I know it wasn't intended this way, Dawn, but our kids don't emerge out of French immersion in fifth grade, it is a program that goes through 12th grade. And while the intensity of the immersion piece changes, it changes the grade three and again at grade five coming into grade six. These students are participating at a completely different level of verbal and cultural fluency with the French language. And I think there is, there, there is no substitute for active dialogue and that is what happens from grade six through 12. So, you know, I, I understand we're in a pandemic, but I, I can't emphasize enough the importance of that active dialogue. And how that may be delivered, I, I would love to hear more about that because if it isn't daily and if it isn't active engagement, they will suffer significant setbacks. After having had three kids go through the program, I can talk to what that looks like even going to school and the diminishing returns of not practicing every single day. And my university kids can tell you what that looks like when they have a semester off. High school kids can tell you what looks, that looks like for the French immersion students when French is first semester and not second semester. So I just want to reiterate, there is no substitute for this active engagement and dialogue. And any way that we can find to do that is really important.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, the reason why instead of just having four core blocks, having that 12 to 12:42 before the fully asynchronous time is to have those opportunities, so that's, that's, you know, that's, that's, I think, the intention of that 12 to 12:42 block is to provide it. But I, I don't, I can't say that it's, it's, that's the only thing that happens during that block. I know for some kids, you know, they're getting academic support, but those, some of those kids perhaps were not taking French immersion to begin with because that conflicted with their schedule regardless.
But Peter, Peter, with this, is world language all five days or all, well, yeah, five days regardless of which days you're in person? I just, right, don't the middle schoolers have world language every day?
In order to get to all the different kids in, in the grades, I don't think it's all five days synchronously now.
Can we get clarification on this, like before next week, we are so close to the opening day and, you know, in a district that prides itself on language and world, world languages and cultures, like this, this is a flagship program for the district. And I got it, we can't have everything, it can't all be perfect, but, but this is, this is a challenge.
Yeah.
Yes, we'll get more information on that because I think, as you know, because so many classes that some of our staff have to go to and minimizing obviously safety, safety for staff as well, because they can't be in some, for example, in the elementary grades, some of them would travel to 29 classes. So that's why we've had to that triad model, the secondary teacher and embedding some of that French in the model by, by that, almost like a co-teacher model. So that the teacher would be in with those cohorts, but you're right, it does definitely create limitations. And Peter, if you can get some more specific examples of how that works for next week, that would be great.
And especially the co-teacher piece, because if the co-teacher isn't a French-speaking teacher, that raises some questions.
Right, it only works for the ones that have the ability to.
So one of the reasons, one of the other topics we want to hear a little bit more about tonight is I've asked Dr. Patello and Dr. Cuska to give some more insight around specifically the middle school.
Who the hell is it?
And the the tracking and non-tracking of.
Susan, you're not muted, just so you know.
About the middle school in terms of math and science and middle school eighth grade parents received an email last weekend stating that our advanced science class was not going to be available, and so I'd like to have some discussion around that. Acknowledging that we're in a worldwide pandemic, acknowledging that we may have staffing issues. I would like to have some conversation around this though, and I had, you know, I'm not going to re-express my concerns again, as you're fully aware of them. But I'd like to start that discussion.
Um, yeah, so I can, I can give an explanation of, of why that, why that was decided. I mean, as you know, that the hybrid model builds a lot of complexities into what you can do, what you can't do. Some of the key factors around cohort creation, keeping social distancing, avoiding shared spaces and having limited, limited in-person interactions, put a lot of restraints on what. put a lot of restraints on what can be accomplished and what can't be accomplished. And the middle school has really put together a model that we believe gives us the greatest chance of having kids continue with in-person instruction for as long as possible, and ideally the entire year. By having really tight cohorts of like 10 to 12 kids, by not having shared spaces, so kids are staying in the same space, and teachers are rotating to them, by not sharing materials, all those things put a lot of restrictions. So with that in mind, the eighth grade honors science is predominantly based upon the IPS curriculum, which is a entirely lab-based, in-person collaborative curriculum, which is really not possible to be done in these circumstances. Not all kids will be in a science room. The sharing of materials is incredibly challenging. The amount of time in person is limited. And so although there will be some lab-based activities, that IPS-type curriculum, you know, you know, must be done in a science room, is, you know, pretty much entirely lab-based. If you, you know, I experienced it as a kid and seated as a teacher and as an administrator. And so that part is not, is that not possible. In addition, when you look at, you know, we got all these factors. So we have, you know, math levels, we have special education groupings, these various factors that come into play, as well as alpha splits. We, and we need to keep kids, you know, we can't have more than 12 kids in a physical classroom. So we need to do everything that is possible in order to keep those numbers even. Where typically, you know, you'll have some classes that might be 18 or 20, and some classes that might be 28 or 30. You can't, you can't do that this year. So we're doing everything, we, we, you know, we're doing everything in our, in our power to, you know, create those groupings as carefully as possible. And it's still, they're still working out that puzzle. They're going to, you know, make sure that they offer the algebra option in math, though they're still not sure if there might be situations where there might be a classroom of kids that has both algebra and math eight kids in it, and the teacher will be, you know, kind of teaching both at one time, or they might be separate cohorts where they're responsible for both groups, but they're not in the same place. They're still trying to figure that out. But kind of all these things, you know, if, if you add on an additional layer, honors science, some of those honors science kids are in algebra, some are not. So it creates, you know, these different clusters of kids that need to be scheduled, which make it, you know, nearly impossible to have those groups that are no bigger than 12 kids. On top of it, the honors science numbers are a little lower, which can push up, potentially push up the other size groups to their limits. And that's one thing, you know, in nodding a lot, we also need to be able to be prepared. One of the reasons it has to be not only as even as possible, but as low as possible, we still need to be able to bring kids in from remote at the end of each quarter throughout the year. So it's, you can't have, you know, you can't like limit where you have space. You need to have as many spaces in different classrooms as, as possible to, to, to do that. So it's, it's a, it's, you know, we, we had intended to, you know, have honors science, and again, it would be that IPS-based curriculum, but all these different factors. We always struggle with how do we balance out class sizes, as well as have balanced group as, as much as possible. Another factor is typically, you know, we have these different levels, but then we can mix kids in other classes. So it's not like, it's just, you know, if you're in this one class with this cohort of kids, you're never in a different group. What having all these different factors puts into play is you end up having, you know, maybe four groups that are all based upon algebra and honors science kids, and the other groups are based upon stupid students with special education plans and the remainder of the kids. And there's no real ability to, you know, you know, create balance across non-science and the non-math classes, because you have this cut of, this cohort system, which is really rigid this year in order to maintain safety. So again, it's not, there's not really one simple reason, it's a multiple factors that, you know, as they were analyzing the schedule and all the possibilities, came to that conclusion.
Dawn?
Okay, um, you know, I've had one child go through this class, and my experience as a parent was it was by far the most beloved and rigorous class that she took in her first, you know, her years in Holliston. Parents and students were advised on May 1st that this class was available. We were also advised that there would be three levels of math, a math eight, an accelerated math, and an algebra. And that was walked back about a month later, where you then just offered algebra and math eight, got rid of accelerated math. But I'm upset at the fact that, you know, 120 days later, two weeks before school started, they're first notified that science eight honors. And I just want people to understand, it's the IPS class that Holliston Public Schools has offered for at least the last 15 or 20 years. It's an intro to physical sciences. It touches on, it's almost like a survey class that touches on chemistry, physics, biology. It's rigorous, it's comprehensive, it is heavily lab-based. My understanding is you guys re-tagged it, science eight honors this year. And the reason, because I pulled the May 1st email from Mr. Jordan, was that the name change was due to incorporation of some of the science eight standards. I'm concerned, because the email that went to parents on Friday indicates that there will be labs in science eight. So if we can do them in science eight, we can do them in IPS or honors science. But I think the really important part isn't what I think, or necessarily what, you know, we talk a lot about equity, we talk a lot about student voice and choice, and we talk a lot about that at the high school level. And I know you guys have worked ardently not to take away courses and choices at the high school, and some of them have been taken away. But I'm really concerned that these kids in middle school worked to their eighth grade level, and were told that they would have these five offerings. And we stripped away one, and now we're stripping away another. Science is important, even if you're 13. But I think, you know, I've had people in the community reach out to me about this, but I think the most impactful voices to me are the students. So I want to read to you what some of your students, and I think you should actually, or the school should be proud of, proud of these students, because not only are they successful young women right now, but they're reaching back to the Holliston Public School students this year to, to kind of advocate about how important this, this class is. So this is from Kelly Irons. She's at Cornell now. I think she might be some type of science or engineering major. "I'm writing to convey the impact that honors classes at Robert Adams Middle School had on my educational career. IPS is a class that I still look back on fondly. The hands-on lab work made learning enjoyable and provided a great foundation for my chemistry courses in high school. The opportunity to work in lab groups was also extremely valuable in helping me build teamwork skills. More broadly, the opportunity to take honors math and science classes in eighth grade supported my enrollment in even more challenging courses in high school. These opportunities for hands-on lab work, teamwork, and intellectually challenging classes provided by eighth grade honors math and science helped me develop as a student and form the foundations of the skills I use as a mechanical engineering student at an Ivy League institution. And I think they should continue to be available to students. Thank you for your time. Best regards, Kelly Irons." This is from Sarah DeVoe. "Looking back on my time at the HPS, IPS was one of the most challenging yet formative classes I had the opportunity of taking. Taught me how to learn through doing, how to deal with failure, how to study for a fast-paced class, how to have a strong work ethic and care about the quality of your work. IPS prepared me for high school classes and even into college. I single-handedly used the skills and techniques I learned in IPS in university upper-level classes more than any other class I took. While this class did not necessarily lead to the best grade, it led, it led to lifelong learning. I additionally challenged the phased end of leveled classes as a whole. As a student at the higher performing end, I often felt invisible in general ed classes. I generally understood the material or could pick up on it quickly in most classes. Many teachers then focused their attention on those who were struggling. When I was in leveled classes, the teacher often had a better ability to spend time with each student. I firmly disagree with the belief that teachers are able to meet many levels within the same classroom. I'm concerned about how they're going to do that in the middle of a pandemic with half of their students hybrid and half in class. Took a class where there were four levels of classes with a teacher who was very capable in their subject, yet struggled to meet all of our needs. I cannot say it is the fault of the teacher, as that situation seems like a spread too thin, and priority is given to those who struggle with content. The high school runs on a leveled class system, and not slowly introducing it would be a disservice to our students. Without these leveled classes, how prepared for high school are you, whether at HHS or another school?" Another email, Sage Grant. "Hello, my name is Sage Grant. I graduated from HHS in 2018 and attended Robert Adams Middle School. I heard that honors classes such as IPS may get cut. I would like to strongly contest this action, as I had a wonderful experience in IPS, as did many of my friends, and I know many other people who thoroughly enjoyed it. These classes not only prepare you to excel in high school and even in college, they motivate and promote learning for specific subjects. The work ethic I learned by taking IPS is unquantifiable. I continue to use the same techniques and methods for studying that I learned while taking this class. Even though my grade in this class was not one that I am extremely proud of, I either received a C or C+, it further encouraged me to pursue science in high school and develop a fondness for it that I hold to this day. This course taught me humility, and that I could accept and push through failure in order to rise above it. Exactly the resilience and grit that we talked about in PD development that happened this week. Though some may argue that the separation of students does not promote equality or well-being, I thoroughly disagree. Whenever I am in a course with students who are much faster or more well-versed in the subject area, it makes me feel worse about myself, discouraging me from asking questions and getting the full potential out of a class. Middle school is also a stepping stone for high school, meant to prepare students for the class's workload and new environment. By cutting honors courses from middle school curriculum, the second, the school system would be failing to prepare their students to the best of its ability. I am currently in my third year of college with a 4.0 GPA, preparing to graduate a year early. I have succeeded at the college level primarily because of the honors courses I took in middle school, because that is where I learned how to study, strive for success despite some failures, and to be a better student. I hope this email helps to keep IPS at the middle school. Thank you for your time." Jenna Prowlitt. "I'm currently a junior at the Stevens Institute of Technology in New Jersey. I plan to graduate in 4.5 years with both my bachelor's and master's in chemical biology. I can confidently say that IPS is what helped me get there. Jenna's letter's long, and so are the two others I have, but these are just some of the students that benefited from this class and reached back to advocate to the young women and men that thought in May, when they signed up for it, that it would be available to them." And, and I guess my concern also is we know about gender gaps in science and in engineering. We know about the disproportionate number of young women that drop out of these classes. You have middle school students that signed up for this. How many signed up this year? Was it 40 or 50? How many were enrolled last year? This is a program I'd like to see continue. Um, you know, we sometimes see things posted, or people write to us about slipping in the rankings, or maybe our proficiencies in science or math dipping. I think taking away educational opportunities and ability to achieve at different levels with a rigorous curriculum is the wrong direction. So I would like to know how many kids thought they were going to get the opportunity to take this class. You know, this pandemic's going to bring a lot of things. We're going to see all kinds of sports and programs cut for kids, but we can do academics, and we can provide this rigorous curriculum. If we can do labs for science eight, we can do it for this class.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Go ahead, Catherine.
Is this, is the, what Donna's presenting and, and what we're talking about in terms of the, the course not happening, is that, is this COVID-related for this year, or is this going forward? It's not going to be ever again?
As my, as I hope my explanation explain, yeah, the reasons for this are due to COVID-related issues, which we are, we're trying to put forth in order to keep kids in school.
And I think honestly-
Or going forward.
I, I was going to say that honestly, it is very unfortunate for a program not to exist, and with the limitations. But I really do think that should we get in a better place with the pandemic this year, and let's be hopeful and optimistic that we do move forward. And if programs are able to open up, I would like to see us try to be able to maybe, even if it happened mid-year or something, to try to bring it back then. I know it would come with a challenge, but Peter, if it's something we can talk about, that I really think that, given, you know, it's so nice to hear those stories from students and someone that taught science myself, and have a passion for STEAM offerings, and I agree with the gender for STEM education, for females in general is so critical at these ages. So if there's any possibility, even if it's mid-year, if we get into a better, safer place, that our cohorts can open up a little bit, I would like us to see if we can try to bring it back, even if it isn't for the full year.
Yeah, I mean, I think even in June, when we were, you know, considering the three-foot distancing in less strict cohorts, we had planned to, you know, run this. Certainly in May, when we asked for people to sign up, we intended to run, run this. The, the precautions that are put in, put in place at the middle school are intended to give us the best chance of keeping kids in school for the year, which I think is going to be, you know, a, a, a big challenge. And so that's, that's the reason for, for this, this year and not in the future.
Anne Louise?
So, um, I'm struggling with this. I'm struggling with it in terms of the decision philosophically and from a pedagogy standpoint, but also in terms of the timing and the process, and some of the things that John talked about. John, I'm really glad that you shared those student statements. I know many of those students because they were in classes with my own children. And I want, I want to talk to this a little bit. When my oldest daughter, who is now 24, was in eighth grade, she was enrolled in IPS, honors math, honors English, and I believe honors history at the time. And since then, there has been extraordinary leveling. And I think it would be disingenuous to not acknowledge that there is a philosophy here that believes that is a better approach to learning. Ironically, the IPS course was held up several years ago as a beacon, or as exemplary of what innovative project-based learning really looks like. And it was the one course we could truly point to in the middle school that caught across disciplines, that in an interdisciplinary approach within the sciences and math, because there's a very strong element of applied math in there, that students were learning together, learning through very active lab-based work. And it was sort of like, unlike anything else. That course alone requires over 40 hours of training for the teacher who's going to teach it. The teachers who are teaching it today and have been teaching it have exceptional experience in teaching that course. have exceptional experience in teaching that course and in doing it in a way that supports all students. And I want to say that importantly because of my three children, two flew through that course and one struggled. She would have been the kid writing a letter that said, I learned so much. My grade didn't necessarily reflect it, but here's what I learned. In addition to the important skills that our students come out of that class with, the ones that Dawn just shared with you, because it's an introductory physical sciences class, our children are exposed to introductory biology, introductory physics, introductory chemistry, and at some levels introductory environmental sciences. It is the single course that gives them a panoramic view of the sciences and helps guide these students as they enter high school in selecting which courses they want to pursue. And they are not all the same. I know that course is often taught as an introductory science class in the ninth grade in many districts throughout the country. We actually hired a tutor for my second student by finding her online in Florida. And she taught the IPS curriculum, had been trained in it. The consistency and richness of that curriculum is unbelievable. When my second child entered the class, Dave Zakrisky still had on his desk my first child's lab book. And he handed it back to me and we still have that. We've tossed out a lot of papers over the years. That lab book is like a work of art and a stunning example of what students can do when presented with the challenge and which is equivalent to work that I saw her doing as a senior in AP Bio at some level. I'm not trying to draw ridiculous comparisons. My point here is that what these kids can get exposed to and the challenges that they rise to, you can't, you can't underestimate the importance of that. And I think it's somewhat, I want to say this the right way. I have heard from the administration on more than one occasion that unleveling the courses at the middle school is something that they would, you know, that they believe there's value in. But I think there's cost in that too. And it's going to come, it's going to come at the cost of offering a richness in courses and diversity in courses so that we can meet students where they are. And it's almost ironic to me because we talk about equity and provided, providing differentiated learning. If you go back to our strategic plan, it talks about providing differentiated learning for the individual student. And every time we pull a course like this out of the curriculum, we take that opportunity away. And as a mother of three daughters and one who's now enrolled in an engineering school, I am telling you, this is not the right direction. It's, it's, it's really upsetting. And I want to speak to the timing and process a little bit. I think to do this less than two weeks from the start of school is almost unconscionable. And I know that's a harsh word. I know you've all been working around the clock. I know you were trying to deal with the Rubik's Cube of scheduling, et cetera. But it, it just, it just feels too late, like too dramatic of a decision, too late in the year, and there's no turning back. I'd like to know if the teachers were consulted on this or simply advised? Because I've spoken with some of them. And my understanding is that they offered up some creative solutions and that the lab-based room could have been used, that we could have centered schedules and classes around the lab-based rooms so that labs could be conducted and that we're prepared to put together home lab kits, much the way the high school is going to do. And that they felt they could do this and still maintain the safety requirements that you've put in place. So I really just have a major question about how this happened, how it happened so late and how such a significant decision is being made without apprising this committee, Dr. Cuska, and parents, Pooner. I just don't know how else to say this.
Dawn?
Were any middle school students consulted in this decision?
I'm not aware of that. I really couldn't tell you, but we will look into that further.
How many middle school students asked for this class?
Oh, Peter, do you have the numbers?
I think it's 43.
So that's part of their student voice and choice. I mean, we still have, I know it's a pandemic, guys, but we still have district-wide improvement goals and a three-year roadmap. We still have an educational philosophy in this district that says, we will. We will collaborate to achieve rigorous and differentiated instructional programs. We're still sending these eighth graders up into a high school where some of them will select three or four honors classes. The following year, they'll take two AP classes and the rest are honors. We talk about trying to build resilience and grit and have students make choices for themselves and advocate for themselves. This class gives them the ability in a no-risk situation as an eighth grader, because frankly, nobody's ever going to see that, see, you got an IPS in middle school, to try this out. There's so many things. We just talked about how those 65 kids that loved cross-country, they did pasta dinners, they had practices. Each week they had meets, they've been training for it. They lose that program. And they're going to lose a lot of other programs too. But academics, we can do this. I still, I'm unclear why with 42 kids, 42 divided by 10 or 11, we can't have cohorts that have this class. We can do labs in other classes. We can do labs in this class. If it's completely dependent on class, can we be creative? Can we have the teachers videoing some part of these labs and watching that? We've worked hard to maintain our French immersion program. We've worked hard to maintain Spanish and other programs here despite the pandemic. We need to work hard to maintain this as well. This is an academic opportunity for students in their last year of middle school that I don't want to see leave taken away from them, especially not at this late moment. I mean, would you have sent a Friday afternoon email saying we're going to cancel the French immersion program without bringing forth a robust discussion with parents and students and school committee? No, I don't think so.
I can't, I can't articulate the the stress of this, the, you know, my husband and I, you know, our kids are hitting this critical age where they're heading off to high school next year. And yep, admittedly, full transparency, I have an eighth grader, not affected with IPS, but affected with a math class. We live in Boston, the leader in technology and science and engineering. I am, this pandemic has changed so much for all of us and our kids have lost so much. Our families have lost so much, our teachers, our administrators. But I can't echo Dawn's sentiments enough. This is about academics and we can't let our kids lose out on academics, pandemic or not. And this to me, you know, many parents in my situation feel like I probably should have sent my kids to private school. And there in itself is not equitable. I just, I can't eloquently share with you the frustration and concern from parents. And I'm just emotional because I'm frickin' tired, but, but I just, I think Ann Louise and Dawn said it the most eloquently, but this is about our kids' education and damn it, we can't screw this up right now. These kids get one shot. You know, Mr. Comme used to say, your kid gets one year at third grade. Our kids get one year this year. We can't screw it up.
I do agree Stacy and Dawn and Ann Louise and everyone that it is very unfortunate to get late notice on things with all the changes that have happened. And as a parent myself, I can imagine how that must feel. I also hope that we can work together potentially. I would love to help work with the middle school team and Peter to see if there's a way, although it wouldn't happen for this fall semester, but at another juncture in the year, if we can come up with some of those creative solutions that you're talking about. And it might not look the same as it did in the past for this year, but if there's a way to try to even give, even if it were half a year of that course. So I would love to have that conversation a little more in-depth with the team once we get school reopened because I, I think it's worth trying to creatively problem solve a little bit more.
Ann Louise?
Susan, I would encourage you to sit down with the science department at the middle school as soon as you can and get a real take on whether there's any possibility to salvage this. And I know it would not be a small thing. It would change rooms. It would potentially change cohorts. But I want to know that it's really point of no return and I don't want to hear that tonight. I would like to ask you to just convene with Jamie Cutown, Dave Zakrisky, Catherine Buckley, and a few of the others to get a better sense of this. Because it's, I, I'm not convinced it's too late, but I do know that the science lab rooms have to be science lab rooms. And if they believe there are procedures they can put in place to manage the safety of our students in using equipment, et cetera, then I think it has to be considered because to Stacy's point, it's, you know, it's great to say we're going to bring it back next year, except for the 42 kids who don't get a chance to repeat eighth grade.
Yeah, and I'm hoping we don't have to look at this for the whole year. I agree, Ann Louise, if there's anything more that we can help and support the team with thinking outside the box on, as I said, if it's not for just the fall, but even for mid-year, even if the kids could get half of, half of the year of that in, I don't want to give up on that thinking as well.
Dawn?
Why are we conceding to push it off half a year in where for the last 120 days, parents thought this was going forward? And then we just received the news less than a week ago and the middle school schedules still aren't out. Is there any ability to meet and discuss this on Friday, on Monday, on Tuesday, on Wednesday? And see what you can do? I mean, what were those schedules like up until last Friday? This is a decision that impacts 20% of eighth grade, approximately 20% of eighth grade. Is it even possible to send out the schedules for sixth and seventh grade? Because by no means do I want things held up for everyone. But they still don't have their schedules. There's something else, you know, the kids don't yet have their schedules compared to the high schoolers and they don't start until the 16th. So is it possible to convene with the team and further discuss this and meet with us again Wednesday or Thursday of next week?
Let me follow up with the team as well as Peter. We'll have, we'll meet with that team that you're referring to and hopefully get you some other answers for Thursday night's meeting for sure.
Lisa?
Hi, I'll be quick because I know that everyone's tired. I, I don't know enough about, you know, I have an elementary school student. I don't know enough about IPS to weigh in from a personal standpoint, but I certainly think that there's enough concern that we should be, you know, relooking at this. I just wanted to say something really quickly about leveling while I hear a meltdown about bedtime. Just from another perspective, from the not necessarily high achieving perspective. From what I've seen, and this is anecdotal and I, you know, I don't want to seem in any way disrespectful to people who have PhDs in curriculum. But I do see that when you put children who are struggling with children who aren't, that that becomes a self-esteem issue quickly for the children who are struggling. And I know generally the theory behind, behind leveling to, you know, we want to have kids aspire to do better. We want the kids who really understand the material to be able to teach the kids that don't, it helps them learn it better. I know there are a lot of bonuses to leveling, but I'm, I just want to weigh in from the other end of the spectrum. I think that from a practical standpoint, it is something that I think needs a little more conversation. And I think it really is important to understand the social, emotional aspect of it because I think that there has been a lot of focus on leveling as a measure of equity. And I think we should be looking at leveling just as much from a social, emotional perspective. So I just wanted to throw that out there and I'm not going to take any more time.
Thank you, Lisa. That was a good point. Dawn?
I wanted to address it and I'm not trying to start a debate about leveling or ability grouping. And I think it's important for people to understand this course that's been offered for like 20 years in Holliston was just called IPS before this, right? It was just re-tagged honors in May, okay? It, it is awesome that our middle school has, there's a self-selection here, right? It's not just based on, you know, your relationship with your seventh-grade teacher or how high you scored on a test, right? You could certainly get into this class based on a teacher recommendation. So to that degree, you might be talking about leveling or tracking. But our middle school has had a philosophy that allows students to self-select, right? Self-select for a more rigorous curriculum, a class that you might end up with a C in. But if you love science and you want to go deeper and you want to figure out if this is for you, then that's awesome, right? So please don't look at this class as just an honors class. Because that's not, I really like the part where it's an intro to all different kinds of sciences and it's robust and it's lab-based and project-based. I mean, they were doing that 20 years ago in this class. Critical thinking, persuasive writing, a survey of sciences, but just self-select for it too. And that's really important. And you get that opportunity at a no-risk time. Nobody knows how you did in eighth grade. So that's another part why it's so important, especially for this year, more so than ever. We can get academics done right this year.
Thank you all for that feedback and we will, we will not give up on this topic and hopefully be able to give you updates, even if it's not something we can solve immediately. I hear your passion and I too have a passion for science. And while I'm not an expert in scheduling, I do have a lot of curriculum background. So if I can offer any advice and support the team in any way, thinking about this, we'll, we'll definitely have some more conversations about it.
Thank you. Catherine?
I'm going to change subject unless anybody else wants to say something else more about that. If that's okay. I think this is a quick question. I don't think it's a, it's not a debate question, but it's something that I've heard from a couple of different parents. This is about the third and fourth grade Montessori group because the Montessori third grade will be in full-time and the fourth graders will be split. The question was, can you just tell us a little bit about what the fourth grade will look like if, say, a bunch of them decide to go remote? So if there's 11 third graders and five fourth graders and then three of those decide to go remote, will there be just four or three fourth graders with 11 third graders? Or how will that be approached?
Are you talking about the fully remote? Kids decide to go fully remote? That's who you're talking about?
I, I guess, so because it's the, you know, the, the third, fourth grade split is usually say like around 11 or 12 third graders, around 11 or 12 fourth graders. If the fourth graders are put into cohorts and then, you know, over time, they start to choose to go remote, or maybe they choose to go remote from the beginning, although I recognize in the beginning that you can make, you can even out the, the whatever cohort they're in. My concern is that you could end up with a classroom of 11 third graders. My concern is that you could end up with a classroom of eleven third graders and two fourth graders. And I'm just wondering if that's been discussed or how it will be addressed and how will you sort of even things out? I know in the beginning you can, but as the year goes on, if more people go remote and some stay in, you could feasibly end up with a class of eleven third graders and one fourth grader.
Yeah, we, and we have had some of those conversations because we are, we, we do worry about that. And it hasn't, at this point, it isn't a problem right now. But I agree, this is something we've thought about and haven't been able to problem solve all those solutions yet. So there's more work to come on that. We've even had this conversation related to our pre-kated two populations. For example, if, if certain number of students are in person, but then have to quarantine for a couple of weeks, could they remote in with the remote teacher or could they stay and zoom into the, the existing class? So there's all those things and all those conversations going on and some of them are yet to be solved. But I do think that we are going to be faced with some of these additional challenges, as you point out, as the year goes on. So we have to continue to, continue to problem solve through these and be able to address some of the changes that might happen, that may be unforeseen at this point. Because we've been trying to balance and juggle all of these classes. But I, I do agree, these are some of the questions I've had for administrators as well. But in some cases, we haven't had to address it, but we could be close to that.
But I think in particular, in the, in the grade, in, in the grade four model and then the, this, this is similar with the three, four Montessori. The kids who are fully remote are part of the hybrid cohort. So where you'll have, you know, the majority of grade three kids in, in person all day. And then the grade four kids will be coming in every, you know, half the time. The kid who is fully remote will be, won't be coming in at all, but they'll be kind of, they'll be connecting in the same way that the hybrid kids who are in that remote portion of the day. In part of the way that that's structured to make it reasonable is by having that third educator, that triad educator, so that it's not just one teach, grade level teacher who's attending to the kids in person and the kids at home. It's a grade level teacher with an additional adult support in order to do that. It's still ideal, you know, to have everyone in person every day. And it's, you know, the second best scenario is having kids in at least half the time. But the, those kids who are fully, choose to be fully remote will be part of that cohort and supported by those two educators and part of that.
And I know part, part of, part of the answer can't really be answered, right? Because we just don't really know what's going to happen and how many people are coming and going. It's just, it's something that has come up with parents a couple of times that have said things to me. So I just sort of wanted to give air to the, because Montessori is so based on having multiple ages in one room. You could feasibly end up with, you know, over time, a classroom of fully in-person third graders and a fourth grader. And then that's, you know, it's not, it's not on the line with the, with the Montessori ideals or pedagogy, but also just that kid will be lonely, you know, like what, how would they do from a social emotional standpoint? And I don't expect you to have all the answers for that, but just that it was a, it's sort of a question that a lot of people have had. And I, I didn't have an answer for it, so I wanted to bring it up.
Oh, you're right. Once they peel off one layer of the onion, there's a whole other layer to keep going through.
We've really got into like, yeah, say, say there was a group of hybrid kids that it's only possible to have them in half the time, but say enough of kids went remote fully, would we, we probably would consider, you know, having them in full-time if, if the spacing allowed it. We, we, we'd still need to be able to bring those other kids back at the quarter if they decide to shift. Those types of things. I think we want to have as many kids as we can in while still having the safe protocols. And we need to be able to flex and allow for kids to come back in. You know, at the, we, we kind of designated at the quarter, so we have to be flexible in that way too. And so you have a lot of moving parts that we'd have to consider.
Yeah, one, and you, so you just touched on one of the things that I was wondering about is if, you know, if you end up with, say you, you've got a classroom of eleven fourth graders and nine of them go remote. Are the two that are left, are they still going just to alternating three days a week? Or could they go all the days? Or is that an equity issue? You don't have to answer all that now. I just, it's part of conversations that I've heard.
Yeah, I think we'd have to think fully through it, but I think it's something we'd certainly consider. Because if we have the space for more kids, because other kids have chosen to go fully remote, we want to consider it. But we would have to consider the equity issues and I'm sure there's a bunch of them we'd have to unpack.
Yeah, okay. We can unpack it later, not at ten o'clock at night. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Dawn?
Something I just want to bring up, it, it does fall under school reopening, but there are other school districts, Lincoln Sudbury, for example, that have put forth resolutions about testing. So I just wanted to bring up what I saw they did and figure out if you guys have an interest in maybe me drafting or reaching out to them and drafting something similar for our collaboration and discussion next week. And, and it goes like this, I just, just to simplify it, I'm going to read it. Let's see.
Do you mean MCAS testing, Dawn?
Not MCAS testing, COVID testing. And you probably saw in the news that there'll be more rapid testing coming out. Lincoln Sudbury is developing plans to reopen in the fall with risk mitigation strategies that balance risks due to exposure to COVID nineteen with the impacts of isolation and remote learning on student education, nutrition and mental health. This is being done without the backing of a public health system that can adequately test and isolate those who are or might be at risk or who have been exposed to a known or suspected COVID nineteen case. Recent modeling exercises show that low sensitivity tests, when done at high frequencies can rapidly identify infected individuals. Key to isolating the virus, stopping an outbreak and maintaining schools as open. These cost-effective, one to three dollars each, high-frequency, low-sensitivity tests are available. Other low-cost testing such as pooled PCR tests are also available. So Lincoln Sudbury put together a resolution to bring forth to the governor and the commissioner of education, one, allocate funding for regular proactive testing for teachers, staff and students in our schools. Again, not mandating it, making it optional. And the resolution is just asking for funding for a program like this, especially as the one to three dollar tests become available, more widely available like they anticipate in October. Two, support school districts to identify and procure appropriate testing strategies and supplies, which may include low-cost, low-sensitivity tests to be used at high frequencies. And three, mandate that the mass department of public health and local public health departments provide real-time data for decision-making, including daily updates on the number and rates of new COVID cases, percent positive tests for COVID two and exposed contacts in their district. So I thought the third point was especially interesting too. We have town of Holliston data. It's updated each Monday and when the numbers come up. But it, it doesn't really reflect when they were tested. We just kind of know when they fall off of the active category. And it also, I believe, may reflect categories of individuals with little or no contact to the schools, like individuals in nursing homes or assisted, assisted living facilities. If you're in Framingham, it might reflect incarcerated outbreaks at, at the prison. It also might even reflect some of our college students that are down south or on the west coast. And they get tested and they're reporting back to our department of public health. So that third point where maybe we could, again, we don't need individual names, but age ranges and actual dates they were tested as opposed to, oh, we, we figured out there was a test that we missed from three weeks ago. So now we're going to bump the number from sixty-four to sixty-five. It might allow our school system to make better real-time decisions. And I, I really do advocate for that widespread testing. If they can get it down to one to three dollars and the state would be willing to put funding for it. So what do you guys think? Do we try and put this together?
I would like to, and I would really like to, you know, work with Senator Spilka and Rep Dykema on this. I think it's, I think it's really important and it's, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm in.
I agree. Dawn, I actually had spoken to Tina Heine, a select board member about trying to get better disaggregated data from the chief, because right now we just get a number. We don't understand like where they're from, like, you know, some of the, that this color coding on its own is not really helpful for our purposes. And I feel like being able to have at least some idea of the age grouping or whether that person has any relationship to the schools would help us to determine whether or not we would be able to remain open or we'd need to close. Something that happens at the Timothy Daniels is not necessarily going to affect our numbers in the school. So I did speak with her about that. I'm hoping that she's going to, you know, be able to reach out to chief to, and through Susan and Stacy to get more of that data too. So I would support a resolution about that. I was reading a lot about the saliva tests and things that I actually sent Keith an email about whether or not we could figure out testing for our sewage. Because I know they're doing that in other, in other towns just to see if there's any presence of COVID even in the environment. So I know that's probably not likely that we could do that, but I just figured I'd send it along.
No, and thank you for bringing that up. I did, I had met with Chief Cassidy on Tuesday, asking some of these questions as well and getting more understanding of the contact tracing and what it means and obvious limitations as well. And had that conversation before this meeting briefly with him as well, because getting updates. And sometimes, you know, you get the number on Wednesday night and it makes a change. But it's like you said, it's not in real time. And then we have to another, wait another week until they change the map, for example. But it might already be resolved in a day or two. So that is frustrating and something that we need to tune in to.
And I just want to, I have a Wellesley teacher sending me a, a Wellesley article about how they're exploring an ambitious COVID nineteen testing pilot for their school. So maybe if we can reach out to our contacts there and see what they have cooking on that, as well as push forward a resolution. So why don't I draft it and I can circulate it in advance and then we can probably discuss it on September tenth? Okay.
Dawn, that would be great. I appreciate you taking the lead on that. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So with that being said, it is ten oh seven. I would like to adjourn shortly. For next week, so next week is the meeting before the students go back to school. So in a typical year, we would normally do a report on, you know, the state of the schools and how everyone's ready to go back. So I'd like to see if we can do something like that COVID edition. I know that there has been absolutely no time, unless I'm wrong, to look at district goals. So that's something we would usually do in this September timeframe. I'm really presuming you've not had time and I wouldn't expect you to have even looked at that document yet. But it is something we should probably consider for October.
Yes, we did look at it briefly and, and had that conversation. I did say to the principals that I would ask the school committee to allow us to push that on a little bit to get kids back and get into our routines.
Absolutely. And well, I was speaking for me. Nods from the rest of you? Yes, okay, good, no? Okay, so next week really will be just another sort of school opening update. Dr. Cusk will announce any new hires, new people to our HPS family. Keith, I'm hoping you'll be able to give an update sort of on the operations of, of schools. An update on the HVAC system, because I know you're still waiting for the report from that contractor, you know, any of sort of those logistical details that people would be inquiring about. I may have some warrants that I sign next week. I did not sign any this week. And I also want to talk next week too. I think my, it would be, I'd love to see our communications subcommittee maybe start off the year with a newsletter or something. So I just want, I think Catherine and Lisa, is Ann Louise the third person? No, Dawn. Who's the, okay, maybe if the three of you could just come up with something, the year's starting, the kids are coming back, just, we should start some communications from, from the school committee if, if you don't mind. Are there any other agenda items that I'm not thinking about? Peter, do you, I'm not, you know what, we'll talk about it later. I was going to say, do you want to give another update on the PD for next week? Or is there anything you'll need to want to update us on curriculum-wise?
No, I think we're really focusing on trying to get this, you know, prepared for the beginning of this year, so.
Okay. And I, I'm not trying to put work on you. I know, I know your cup is running over completely full. Keith, am I forgetting anything else from, um, from the beginning of the year? I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Well, if we think of it, let Susan and I know. We'll add it to the agenda. So our next meeting will be next Thursday, September tenth, twenty twenty at seven PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved by Cynthia.
Seconded by Dawn.
Moved by Cynthia, seconded by Dawn, roll call vote. Mrs. Listevnik?
Yes.
Dr. Savard?
Yes.
Ms. Naborsky?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Koshin?
Yes.
Mrs. Rafi, yes. Thank you all, wishing you all a happy and relaxing, for some of you, Labor Day weekend. We'll see you all next week. Good night, everybody.